Okay, all right. Well, I call this meeting to order. And we don't have any members of the public here for public comments. So we'll just proceed on to agenda items. Arts and Culture Master Plan Review. So, does staff have a presentation on this?
Uh, no presentation, but really wanted to follow up from our first committee meeting, where we had brought before you the goals, and the goals recommendations and the initiatives. And at that time, the committee had requested two additional columns be added, which we have done so in the attachment that you have, the implementation leads, and then the implementation partners. So staff identified some of these. Some of these were already identified within the plan, and then other staff started to add into it. So these are a recommendation. These are not a requirement. If we wanted to change these, we do not have to change the master plan, or make any kind of official alterations, because they were just recommendations. What the City Council ultimately adopted was the goals, recommendations, and initiatives, not the leads and not the partners. So really, that's up to your discretion. So what we're looking for today is input on the implementation leads and partners. And if there are specific strategies that we want to implement, I would like to make a recommendation to the committee. And that is that we focus, for now, on the implementation lead and partners, and not the specific strategies, and that we wait until our new Arts and Culture Specialist is onboard, so that she is part of that and hears firsthand from you all what exactly it is, so that as she comes onboard and begins to search for grants and start connecting with the community, that she has an understanding as to the nuanced priorities within it. Because there's one thing to say, you know, goal one, recommendation two, initiative two. But it's different to understand the backstory and the history and the specific nuances of why. So that would be my recommendation. But if you're ready to provide specifics on which strategies you'd like to recommend to the entire commission, we are prepared for that as well. But our recommendation, given that we'll have a new staff person that will be leading the implementation initiatives, would be that we wait on that portion and focus on the leads and partners. Although it's two separate agenda items, if it's okay with the committee, I'd like to kind of combine those. And mostly because it really becomes kind of a joint discussion as to the steering committee. What we have in the final page of your packet is what we had identified as the steering committee. Now, this has some of the original names that have since no longer decided to participate. But we wanted to provide what was in the master plan at its adoption. So this can be adjusted. This can be modified. What we're looking for is input from you all. If you have specific names or organizations of partners, we're happy to reach out to those folks and see if they're interested. But if there is just categories, for example, you want someone who is more in the performing arts, or you want folks who aren't in the arts disciplines and you want just general business interests, we'll take that input as well. I will formally now introduce Mark Morley, who is with our Economic Development Division and Community Development Agency. So partnering with Mark, seeing how this whole goal and plan was to kind of infuse economic development and the Arts and Culture Commission, he will now be a more active part of the commission and will be overseeing our Arts and Culture Division, so to speak, of the Community Development Agency. So we're looking forward to partnering with Mark and to bring in more business contacts, so that we can start building those stronger partnerships. And in order to do that, we would like to get some input on what type of partners you're looking for, whether it's funding, whether it's active participants, so that we can work collaboratively on what that looks like.
Well, it makes sense to work with the new staffer on the specifics of implementation. But it would be good to maybe review the steering committee list and offer some suggestions. Also, to talk about the December reception, where we're going to invite our steering committee members and kind of reactivate them. I think that would be something good to talk about. And that would also be a good time to introduce our new staffer to our local creative community. So, do y'all have any prospective dates or?
So we're more than happy to do that. And although we can't necessarily commit to a date-to-date, we have to make sure that scheduling works. But what we were looking at is the first week of December in order to do that, which would be the 7th.
Well, I can tell you right now, I'm not going to be here from December 11th to the 18th.
You won't be here December 11th or the 18th?
Right. So, but it doesn't really matter if I'm not here, but I'm just waiting for you to know I'm not here.
Oh, okay. So I've just been told that we have a different start date now for our, for TRAM. Tramlee is her name. I know I've mentioned it for, to the commissioners, but just for the official record. Tramlee will be starting, it sounds like, now December 11th, so we'll want to push that out. So given that, an option because of the dates and knowing that, we may want to push it into January as kind of a new year, new start.
That would be fine.
So we can do that.
Just that we've done winter mixers before, it's always good to either one or the other, but it'd be a good time to reactivate the steering committee members.
And that's something that we can do, and that actually will probably help with attendance. A lot of activities happen in the month of December, so that may also help with attendance. So what we can do is we can schedule something for January. And we can look at dates that'll work for the majority of the commissioners, hopefully all of the commissioners. What we also could do is do it on the 18th, which is the normally scheduled date for this commission. So we can have the commission meeting and then have a reception immediately following. So that would be an option.
I can do that.
Yeah, I can do that. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, so we can, we can look at the logistics of that, but tentatively, it can be scheduled on or about January 18th, and we can work out the times.
So I was thinking that we can reactivate the steering committee, but also maybe just kind of put a, because if I'm not mistaken, the steering committee doesn't really have a role right now, right?
Correct.
It's supposed to be a, it's actually, the role it's supposed to have in the master plan, it's a transitional body to help administrate and start the implementation until we get a staffer. So we were supposed to have already been working with the steering committee. And then, and then we were going to get the staffer, and then, you know, they were going to assist the staffer. So now we're actually just starting with the staffer and the steering committee, reactivating them both.
So I know that you had asked, like, whether we want categories of people or, like, specific talent. I was thinking, whenever this mixer actually does take place, maybe what we can do is just kind of invite everybody and anybody, and then just put out, you know, a request for, you know, if they're interested in being a steering committee member, like, have a little application or questionnaire, like, you know, why do you want to be, like, what strengths or talents or whatever, or skill sets do you, you know, think would be useful? Instead of telling them what we want, is that if people think that they have something, whatever their perception of Arts and Culture Commission is and, like, what they can bring, then I think that might kind of help. Because I don't know if everybody knows why we exist, right? It's just something that just, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Because if there's, like, if we put categories, and people are like, "Well, I want to be involved, but I don't know where to put myself," and that might be a little bit limiting.
Great idea. We can do that. We can send out, almost like a call for artists, but call for steering committee members.
We had talked about, at our last meeting, number one, reaching out to the steering committee, asking, "Are you interested, you know, in continuing on?" And then, you know, maybe, like, ask them again, like, you know, what area of expertise or, you know, what area of the implementation are you interested in helping out with? And, you know, how much do you want to participate? Like, are you still interested in being committed, or do you want to just? You know, I thought we were going to do that survey of sorts to the existing steering committee members.
I've already talked to a couple people, and their question is, what is their time commitment? How many meetings would they have to meet, you know, during the year? Because they have other, you know, commitments as well, but they're willing to participate. But they're asking me for the time commitment. So do we know about that?
And that's really up to the commission, as involved as you would like to. Generally, for a volunteer situation like this, I would recommend no more frequent than monthly. Monthly for about an hour, hour and a half is a pretty acceptable commitment level. And as needed, I mean, if you have a special event or something coming up, you may have more frequent meetings, but it'd be for a limited purpose and probably a steering committee of the committee, so to speak, a subcommittee of the committee.
So I have a couple people. Do I tell you now, or do you guys?
Yeah, my suggestion was, maybe we could have cards or something at this, or some presentation, or some, like a breakdown, maybe just what you prepared right here, so people can review it blown up at the reception. So people can start getting their mind back into the master plan. And then I would offer, like, some little card that offers three options for participation. And the most involved would be steering committee member. The least involved would be, you just want to get on the mailing list to be notified of events. And then maybe we can think about some in-between, you know, like, you know, at-large ally or something. Neighborhood ally or something like that, you know?
Or affiliated or something.
Yeah, something like that. Or like arts supporter or something. So that there's three tiers, so that some people, they just want to be kept abreast. Some people are going to say, "Well, give me a call when you need something specific." And other people are like, "Yeah, I'm there every month," just, you know. Because some people really do want, are really, have been knocking on the door, wanting to donate their time. And it'd be good to make, to take advantage of that.
In terms of size, I would recommend that we be probably no more than 20 to 25 in terms of having a manageable working group. I would make that recommendation. If you want to have more, we can do that. Of course, not everyone will come every single meeting, so you're kind of okay. But a group larger than that becomes a little bit more difficult to manage.
Well, I'm wondering, the steering committee, okay, so according to the master plan, the technical, whatever, the steering committee, now that we have a full-time staffer, like, they don't really need to be the steering committee, right? So if we have, like, the steering committee, how do I put this? Like, kind of be the pool of people that we can pull from, right? Not necessarily that they have, like, a specific task or an advisory capacity, but like, we can call it something else, and that these are the people that we will be then putting into other, like, more specific committees for implementing specific, you know, goals or agenda items.
So like, somebody who's really involved in comlink? Like, they might have the task or the responsibility of disseminating all the arts information to the neighborhoods or something, and they have to be there at every monthly meeting, and they're going, you know, like, for, that's an-
I mean, they could be part of, like, the community outreach subcommittee, or, you know, something like that. But I don't, because I'm a little bit concerned that if we, that if we somehow have an expectation of managing all, like, 25 people to collectively, like, come up with ideas and, like, you know, vote on stuff, or, you know, decide on stuff, like, that just seems a little-
I think, I think the commission should give priorities. So, like, we might say, "These are the four priorities we're going to start with." And then they focus on those priorities. And then maybe they get to certain benchmarks, of like, "Well, this is the next crop that we're going to do now, you know, so that we can have."
So it's a completely different structure than, like, what I'm imagining.
Because otherwise, it would be too, it would be too conflicting, I think. Because we should have some kind of, it's just that our time is limited of actually getting into the weeds of going to these neighborhood meetings, you know, and having, like, some of these folks on this advisory committee are more involved with education, for example. So maybe they would be good advocates to help in that endeavor. So if we make education, like, let's say we just make education, fundraising, and professional development priorities. So then, those would be, so then we would probably call from these people, people with an educational background.
So then maybe I think what we need to do is move away from the term "steering committee", because there's, we are steering this effort now, right? And our full-time person is also steering the effort. So maybe it's just, who wants to be an advisory member, right? And those are the people, and not then, like you were saying-
Or like a community advisory thing or something.
But just a coming, because an advisory member that is not part of a committee, right? So that they are the pool of people that have committed to being involved in the commission and the efforts of the commission. Because if we call it, it's a technicality, but if we call it a committee, it's like, all of these people are then tasked with some collective action that they need to do, which is not what we're trying to, because then there's too much, too many chefs, you know, in the kitchen. So maybe what we do is we just call it, like, an advisory, not a board.
Or an implementation team or something like that.
I think, you know, Madam Chair, they do have, like, technical advisory groups, you know, which are very specific to, you talked about education and artists. So if you have these different categories, you can just call them technical advisory groups, you know, for whatever category you guys have, you know, made as the priorities for the strategic plan. Because you're right, then it's not a committee, it's more of an advisory board. You know, when you have initiatives, you can bounce it off of them, and they can give you feedback. So something like a technical advisory group. So throw it out there.
So we're just looking for potential advisory group partners or whatever with some level of commitment.
But not calling it committee.
And we can do that. The only thing that I want to make sure that you all are all aware of is getting into what the priorities and the expectations are, because I don't want to create these different groups. And then, let's say, for the first six months, we're focused on education and youth outreach. And then the other groups that aren't active, you don't call upon them for six months. And then, you know, we get back to this, "Oh, well, here we go again, you know, we weren't called on." So I don't want to have the formation of too many different groups, unless you're ready to have the new arts specialist have frequent meetings with all these folks, but then you're going to have limited agenda items or no agenda items. And then I don't want there to be a perception that they're just spinning their wheels. That may be more counterproductive than the entire, than the intended result.
How about quarterly updates? Because one thing is that we've had no updates. We've had nothing moving forward. And that has its own, you know, set of issues. So as we're preparing to move forward now, maybe part of convening all these people together is to give regular updates, because they're all key stakeholders in a broad variety of different areas. And there's actually only 18 names, so there's not 25 names, there's only 18. And I'm guessing, like, a fourth to a third are not going to come back, because they're just going to be busy, or they've moved on to other things. So really, we're really talking about about 13 names. And then if we add just a few, then we should be well under 20, you know. And then seeing who is actually going to be coming to these convenings. But if we make them quarterly convenings, because we don't have a dedicated website, and we don't have really, like, oh, that's another thing I wanted to bring up, and I'm not sure when's the right time to bring it up. But I was going on the Wings of the City page, and it's great that we have a splash page that's Arts and Culture, and it's right on the front of our city website. But I couldn't see any mention of the Arts Commission. There's no link that goes to our Arts Commission page. So if somebody goes, "Oh, wow, Wings of the City, this is so great." And then it says, "More information on Wings of the City, more information on Marine." There's no more information on the commission who supported this and funded this through their budget, you know, because that was our budget that that came from. And we're supposed to be the body that is, you know, came up with this. And it's supposed to be a great introduction to the things that we do, because people are wondering what we do. And there's nothing on it, so I hope we can get-
So those links are supposed to exist? If they're not on there-
Yeah, they're not on it at all. There's no links to us.
I will follow up with our IT department, because those links were supposed to exist. They were supposed to be to the arts page and then the agendas and so forth.
And just even a little blurb, you know, like, "This is brought to you by, you know, this is one of the things that our Arts and Culture Commission does." Because this is a really good visible time for a whole year, to be up there and have people go, "Oh, we have an arts commission. What else do they do? I'm going to click on that page. Oh, there's a grant. Oh, hey, there's a workshop," or whatever it is.
We'll follow up with IT on Monday morning.
That'd be awesome. And so if we have, like, quarterly convenings, maybe with a group, like, an initial advisory group, and we don't call on them actively all the time, maybe some of them are like, "Hey, I see low-hanging fruit. Let me run with this. Maybe we could make that accommodation." But overall, I think it'd be good to just maybe have regular updates, at least, even if they're not actively working on a project. They could, I'm sure that they would love to be updated on what's happening. So.
So if, if we have, if these people, let's say we have, like, three committees or three technical groups or whatever it is, are they free to meet on their own? Or do they have to go through the city to do an agenda to?
No, the whole point would be that it's not a Brown Act. So the steering committee, when it was used to help in the formation, those were not Brown Act meetings. Those were completely administrative meetings, had nothing to do with the Brown Act or the commission, so to speak. So they did not require Brown Act. The city did help facilitate those. Our consultants at the time also led and facilitated those meetings initially, and then staff kind of took over towards the end.
So then I think, you know, kind of pulling everything that we've talked about so far, it sounds like either an email to the existing, maybe both, an email to whoever our contacts are in the community. And then also at this mixer, you know, whatever we end up doing, is having this master plan goals and strategies document available so that people can self-identify what they're interested in. And then what we can do is, like, we can have, like, the three or four main objectives that we, or like, broad categories of, like, education, or like, outreach, or, you know, you know, economic development, or whatever it is, and then, like, plug them in there, you know, and say, you know, so then we have, like, the lead, whoever, the advisory lead or something. And they are then committed to giving us, like, quarterly updates. So they can brainstorm and give us ideas and give input. And then on a quarterly basis, maybe it's like, we have all the groups come in for one meeting here, you know, public meeting, so that the public can then also kind of hear what, you know, what we're, you know, how we're trying to move things forward. So that's just kind of how I, I still would like to see people self-identify with an issue or a goal that they would like to work on, because then they're going to be a little bit more invested as opposed to us being like, "Hey, you're an educator, so like, you know, do this." Yeah. Okay, so that's just practical.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we do have some suggestions for additional names, and we can start with Rosa. Is this a good time to?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay.
Give those names.
I have Heather Gillette from Santa Ana College. She's our Dance Department Chair. I know we have Eve Kikawa on the steering committee list. But I did ask Heather, and her question was the time commitment, but I'll let her know. And then the other person is Marlene Peña Marine. She's with OSHA, with the Folclorico Conservatory. And then I did ask Professor, Dr. Sharon Ray from UC Irvine, from the Dance Department. And right now, she's doing a residency in London from January to June. Then maybe after that, she would be interested. Okay?
Okay. And my additions would be Alan Wu. And I guess he's a part of Unidos now. The writer Sarah Rafael Garcia of Libromobile and Barrio Writers. Dana Gesary from Marcus Gallery on Fourth, right next to the Frida. Omar Avalos from Santa Ana College.
Omar, I know Omar.
And Dr. Matthew Cruz, who I'm told was one of the founders of our Artist Village, and he used to be on the Mayor's Arts Task Force way back in the day. The task force that Mr. Crib used to take all the credit for. I guess the person who did all the work was Dr. Cruz. He's principal at Chavez Elementary now, our Chavez intermediate. And did you have anybody, Jessica?
No. I mean, I'm actually just starting to meet with folks from UCI. So I emailed Jorge about a meeting that I had with the Director of Illuminations, and she's plugging me into some other contacts there, so.
And we can always take additional names, and we'll extend an offer to the other arts commissioners as well, so that they can also provide names as well.
That sounds super. And, okay, so I guess we've covered. Does anybody have any questions or need any more clarification on any of the agenda items? I think we've covered everything, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in terms of next steps, what we'll do is we'll email the entire commission, including the three committee members here, in the event that you have additional names or for Commissioner Chau to provide us some names if you'd like to. But same thing, we'll ask for specific names, but if not organizations, people may just want to have an organization, and then the organization decide who to send. So we'll extend that offer to the entire commission. And then if you have any additional feedback on the community partners or the implementation leads, we'll also send an email to that effect. And then what we'll do is we'll start working on the logistics for the event in January to introduce the new staff member. And at that time, we'll take some of the feedback that we heard, which was to get some general interest information from folks, see if they want to self-identify. One of the thoughts that I'm having, and we can flush it out, and it may not be a great one, but a thought I'm having in terms of the self-identification, besides the card, is we may want to do, like, a simple Survey Monkey, where people can click on which ones they like. And that may be a way to filter it, because I'm just thinking of the administrative end of getting a lot of paper cards and then having to sort through and input and enter it. So we may be able to do something, and we may be able to just have a couple of either iPads or laptops at the mixer, and then they just fill it out there. Because there's no better way to get someone than when you put it in front of their face. And usually, a paper card is the easiest in that situation, but if we just have the electronic devices available, we can flush out what that looks like and get that going.
One good idea is the holidays are coming, so we can talk to more people about this.
Absolutely.
Yes, and definitely, you know, they don't have to be on the steering committee or staff or commissioners to attend. So it would be great to involve, for example, to extend an invitation to McLogan, since they just opened just south of downtown on Main Street.
Absolutely.
Huge industry, and there's other industry-
And we'll reach out to our existing arts network bases, the Cage Camellia Lounge, Grand Central, absolutely.
I'm sure you saw, there's wonderful coverage about their Tropicalia, which sold out at every level and is now being hailed as, like, a whole new era of crossover music programming for our region, so. And they're right here, based in Santa Ana, so there's a lot of other great leaders here. Just as, let's see here, we're going to do, have we concluded with staff member comments? Any other staff comments?
We're excited to have our new staff member onboard and to have- We're excited to have our new staff member on board and to have Mark Morley on board. I think we're really going to be able to to do some of the things that the commission has wanted to do now. A lot of it has been, we just haven't had the resources. So with the new staff person, having now Economic Development on board, and although I will have a different role with the commission now, always be an asset and a resource and having the ability of the city manager's office connection will will definitely help facilitate some things.
All right, Mark.
And we'll continue to make Jorge attend in the back.
Okay.
We'll let him sit in the back row, but you know.
So that in terms of the Economic Development Committee or Commission, like Commission?
Subcommittee?
No.
The Council Committee?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. How, how, how do we know what you guys are doing so that we can plug in or pull from or add to? Do we just need to attend your meetings or is there-
And we can provide agendas because typically the Economic Development Council Subcommittee meets every two months and it's a standard date. It's a Monday at five o'clock. And I can send you guys past agendas of that meeting. It's run by Mayor Protem Martinez, Councilman Sarmiento, and Councilman Benavides. And, you know, there's a lot of economic development issues that they go over. And so I'd be happy to send you guys a links because some of the past ones and, you know, maybe there's an opportunity, I mean, arts and culture is definitely economic development, you know, speaking with them on giving them updates because I know they appreciate the different updates and on strategies and implementation steps that you guys are working on. So, you know, definitely there's an involvement there that we can connect.
That would be wonderful, yeah.
Yeah, it's like Goal Three, you know, support and strengthen, I'm sorry, create conditions where they thrive, whatever. And the recommendation is somehow supporting the creative economy.
Because you're already voting on a lot of these technology initiatives that are going to affect like design industries and gaming and and even production. So it would be good to have some input or or support these kinds of initiatives.
Yeah, definitely.
We don't have a Creative Economy Master Plan yet.
We do not, no. We're actually, so the city was moving in a direction to adopt an economic development strategic plan. And this was back in 2016. It basically got derailed with the departure of the city manager. A lot of different staff left, our Community Development Director, our Planning Director. So a lot of people left. So we had this kind of a shell of an economic development strategy. It was never really vetted through the community, you know, because the intent was to go back out to the community with these proposed recommendations and get feedback. And because of kind of the turmoil that we went through, it just just remained on a shelf. So we're actually looking at picking that back up, you know, dusting it off, updating all the data, because there's a lot of data that's, right now it's about two or three years old. But, you know, updating all that data and adding sections like arts and culture. I mean, arts and culture is an economic development strategy. So how do we then highlight that in an official city strategy, which I think will be important? So that's something that we're looking at, you know, kind of carry into the new year. We hope to, you know, start, because there's a lot of data, so it's going to take a little time to update that. But I'm thinking March, April of next year, there would be this kind of draft strategy that, you know, we would bring to the different groups, vet it through your commission, maybe the redevelopment commission, just get feedback, you know, because what we need to do is this isn't just a city plan. I mean, it's a it's everyone's plan. It's the residents, it's the businesses, it's everyone that's a stakeholder in the city. So it's important to get that community feedback. So we definitely want to keep arts and culture as a focus of that, which it kind of wasn't, you know, because what happened is they just gave us a really quick draft and they kind of just dropped the project. So.
So I guess in terms of exploring the creative economy here in Santa Ana, I think you guys, Economic Development Committee kind of needs to get it set up.
And there's a, and you, right, exactly. And you do see there's like these initiatives because I saw something today, they were trying to form this, it was an Industrial Arts Committee. And I think it was through, I want to say maybe Downtown Inc. And I got an email today about it, but it includes all these different industries that make up kind of the creative class. And so there is some work and I'll try to figure out who's kind of leading this and send it to you guys for information because you definitely should be involved, you know, because that's one of the issues that we always kind of find is when you have different groups kind of doing the same thing, no one talks, you know, and it's like, we need to talk to each other to say, okay, we're not duplicating efforts, we should be working together.
Yeah, and and-
I agree.
And Downtown Inc., I mean, if I'm not mistaken, they're funded by a BID that's focused in a specific geographical area in the downtown.
Correct.
We're talking about, I mean, I've heard from other groups about Downtown Inc. expanding down towards the Santa Ana College. Sounds like now they're also expanding down to South Maine and industrial core because there's a lot of arts manufacture there. And I think, you know, it's being done very stealthily, you know, it kind of, I don't think it should be necessarily driven by Downtown Inc. I think we should-
It should be a community.
Be more active in it. And there's probably other stakeholders that would also like just just a chance to maybe, you know, maybe there's a local leader in the industrial area. I mean, Ardvarks has been there for over thirty years and they have a very large clientele. They've been longtime Santa, a thriving Santa business. Maybe they would like to take a lead instead of giving it to somebody who is so, so closely allied with with one building owner.
Right.
And that's, that's what kind of makes people suspicious.
Sure.
And also because they tend to characterize other people as competition. And we're not trying to build in competition.
I get it, yeah.
It does appear that way. And so we want to encourage, you know, equity and, you know, opportunities that, you know, that benefits everybody and not hidden agendas. I think people get really, you know, tense about that. So I'd love to hear more about Industrial Arts Committee. Also, a budget, usually in, at the beginning of the year, like around February or, I'm not sure when staff presents budget recommendations for the next fiscal year, but it would be good for us to review where we've, what what we've spent on in the past year. I think we've only had one budget presentation the whole time. So it should be just, you know, past what, if there's any surplus, if that's going to roll over into something else. And also, we're facing with our grants, just so you're aware, that out of our four organizational grants that we gave, three of those organizational grants were repeats. Each of those were over two-year repeats. So we're starting to kind of get into a bottleneck where instead of, you know, having this pool of money for first time people that have, you know, not really tapped into the resources that city might offer to stimulate, it's not, that introductory level grant might not, is not for an organization to come in, occupy, and then that's their teat for three years. There should be a limit. And but still, there needs to be support from mid-level organizations. So maybe that's a separate pot of money so that there's emerging organizations and artists, then there's mid-level, and then maybe like somebody like the Bowers is in a different league, you know, and they're already getting, you know, very high level of support too. So just so that we can start to identify and cultivate that pipeline and and know where we're at fiscally too.
That's perfect because, you know, one of the questions that, because I'm I'm learning too, so bear with me as I learn, you know, kind of the history and everything that's going on. But one of the questions was, what's the budget? You know, what funds? Because when you have a plan, you're going to need money to implement this plan. So I've asked our finance department to kind of give me a budget update of what's left, what's remaining in this fiscal year. Because I think this committee and this commission was funded by strategic plan monies. And my understanding is that if strategic plan money is not spent within that fiscal year, you lose it. So I would like to come back to you guys and at least update you on this is what's been spent, this is what you have remaining. And, you know, just so you're aware that we need to spend this by June 30th or you lose it.
Yeah.
So I think that's important because you don't want it to just go away.
Yeah. And that and that's actually how we got the grant program because we had eighty thousand left one year and we had members of the community actually come and advocate and say, please don't reabsorb that, give us, make a grant program and give it back to the community. So that's how we got that. But also, we have a need for professional development, like grant writing classes, also to participate in economic studies like the Americans for the Arts, Arts and Economic Prosperity Study, that now that you have a staffer that can compile that information, I think it's five thousand dollars and it gives you real strategic data so that you can start tracking the the economic impact of these industries we have in the city. So what, we can start thinking about things that are going to build revenue, that are, you know, grants that we can identify so that it's not, it's not just money going out, but that there's a possibility of money coming back in. That would be great.
And it's and it's important, like you said, to to show those measurable results, you know, show what is the economic impact of the arts, you know, because that helps with your commission and when you're making presentations to other groups. And, you know, when we do ask, hey, we need more additional funding to carry out these, you know, these strategies. So you have to have those. Well, this, these are the economic impacts of the arts. So us, you know, a study like that's a great idea. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Sandra has mentioned that quite a few times, tapping into that resource and allocating that that money to being able to get that data since they they already do it.
Could you send me the information?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they also have a YouTube channel. I think it's the Americans for the Arts Channel, but I'll send it to you.
Okay.
And then maybe we can send it to all the commissioners. So everybody, there's like, because they just came out with a new study for 2017. So that way everybody could kind of, you know, look at what the spread looks like nationally.
Okay, that'd be great.
For folks. Okay. All right. So if there's no further comments, would my commissioners have, fellow commissioners have any comments?
I could probably also bring this, well, so as I mentioned, I did meet with, you know, a lady over at UCI, a professor over at UCI. And one of the cool things that I learned about, and I I sent the email to Jorge, but I think, Mark, you should also know about this, is that UCI funds their PhD students to go out on these internships for the, and I have a catalog here. It's part of their graduate program and humanities at their public fellows. Okay, so we have, let's see, someone who interned at the Santa Ana Public Library, doing digital archives for memories of migration. This is also another two, Laguna Art Museum, Education and Public Engagement, Bowers Museum for Curricular Development, Bowers for Educational Department, Heritage Museum of O.C., History of Orange County Timeline, PBS SoCal Curriculum for Writing, Los Angeles Review of Books Developing the China Channel, California Humanities Council, Mac and Humanities Programs. So these folks are funded by UCI to go and work with various nonprofit organizations so that they can then get a real, a real skill set, right? And so I was like, well, hello, like, we could really use some help. And that's why I mentioned, I said, it's great that Tram came from UCI because then she can also, she has that connection as well. But my suggestion to Jorge was, you know, is this, can this be a strategic partner? Because every summer, could we get someone from UCI to literally come and work for us and help us write grants or help like task them, you know, with these things? And they're like super smart and, you know, and it gives them the exposure that they need to, you know, beat the culture, you know, of, anyway, so.
Sometimes, sometimes they don't know about it. So just bringing up the idea, yeah.
That's a great idea.
Definitely.
You know, and I don't know if there are, you know, maybe other programs, like what is it, like CSC, Fullerton?
Castle Fullerton has one.
I don't know if they have a program where they will pay their students to intern at various places. But if there are other, like, like local, like education institutions who have these types of programs, then maybe we can just have people on rotation, where we just have interns for our commission like all year long.
That'd be great. You know, we've got Chapman, we have Cal State Fullerton, maybe even Santa Ana College would have, if, I mean, just data crunching or even if we do that Arts and Economic Prosperity Study, from what I understand, it's it's just a lot of data crunching and a lot of clerical. So something like that, to have a support team-
Yeah.
-to to get those numbers so Tram is not overwhelmed.
And even, you know, using your guys' body as a connection for that group of people to our businesses, you know, because there's like Marcus Gallery, you know, maybe they need someone to come in and actually learn about their business and just be in that atmosphere, you know, that artistic atmosphere. So us connecting them as well to help out our businesses might be an idea. So but I agree with, that's a great idea, Jessica.
Yeah. And then just since we're on the topic of of Tram, I was lucky to be able to interview her, to be on the on the interview team.
That's right.
And and I think she's, she's a really good choice because she's, she has really good grassroots skills and that she's worked with a lot of grassroots communities, a lot of refugee communities and communities that are, you know, are not English dominant. And the Latino community is as well, but she also has worked with a lot of top-tier foundations like the James Irvine Foundation, UCI, and, you know, different educational institutions, the Ford Amphitheater. So it's a really unique person that can work in both those worlds. And I think that that's the kind of bridge builder that is going to be very, very, of very practical value for us here in Santa Ana.
And I'm also really excited that she's Vietnamese because I'm looking at these names on the steering committee and these names that are being proposed for new advisory, whatever. And there's like, not a single Asian person identified. And so-
Well, Alan Wu.
Oh, Alan Wu, okay. Alan Wu, he probably, he has enough personality to speak.
Right.
But, you know, other than him, you know, there's, you know, there is a sizable Vietnamese population and they have a very distinct culture as well. So I don't know how plugged in Tram is with the Vietnamese community. I have some, like-
She's worked with Bala, so she's plugged in.
I think she is very plugged in.
With the local community here and she's done some other film festivals. I'm hoping that, because she is from the Asian community, even though she's not Cambodian, she will, she will have the desire to reach out to other Asian communities that we have present here, just all the communities. We have a really actually a very diverse population and and we don't see those faces present and they have a lot to contribute. So it'd be really good to bring more faces to the table.
Right. So, yeah, so I think, I think that would be good. Because one of my my suggestions or my questions was like, you know, we need to have more Asian or more diverse representation beyond like, you know, Caucasian and Latino. So.
Yeah, I think she's going to be really good. And that and that's just another one of the great assets that she has, is that she, she brings that that third element in. So, okay, well, with that said, do we have any other comments from any other, okay? Well, I think we can adjourn then. So thank you.
I look forward to working with you guys.
Thanks for a productive meeting.
Thank you.
Do you have-